Let's pray. Fathers, I watch the news and I see that we're in an election year and I just pray, Lord, that we will be able to select someone, Lord, that will lead our nation in the right way. I just pray that you will give us the wisdom, city leaders, to do the right thing and be in politics, Lord, be more statesman, that we will represent ours town in a way that's honorable to you, that the things that we do will reflect in your goodness and your mercies, and that we can have a town that you would consider a blessed town. We just thank you so much for the opportunity that we have. We pray to your leadership tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
We have a special guest back here. This is Andrew Burton. He's here to observe and work on... What patch are you working on?
This is the chief of the community.
Okay. Now, he's going to read the pledge for us.
This is a pledge, a pledge that you should do to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call Lady Dora with Councilman Everett absent. Is she okay? Okay. Ramon, the pants don't go over the minutes.
Motion go through.
Motion is being rejected from Ramon, a brief minutes. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. What should be officers?
We've started on the bulk route pump station this week. Probably two to three weeks will be finished with it. We had a sewer main problem down from First Street to Third Street by the railroad. We're going to have to replace one section of it, so we'll be starting on it tomorrow. Other than that, it's good to see you.
Been fairly quiet, hasn't it? The police department, I won't say it's busy.
Our recruit school's scheduled to start the 22nd, conclude May 10th. That looks like it's going to be full of around 10 recruits. Talked with the lady that sells our fireworks to us last week. Totally wanted to request the 4th, and she hadn't gotten back to me yet, but that's maybe a problem. I went ahead and said, well, if we can't get the 4th, we'll take the 2nd with the rain delay being on the 3rd, which is Saturday, Sunday. If we do get the 4th, if she can work it out and we do get it, it's going to be an extra $750 because that's, Fourth of July is their busy day, so they have to upcharge to be able to cover all their events that they go to. I should know something next week whether to have it the 4th, but like I said, I just went ahead and scheduled for the 2nd. Third, if we can't do the 4th.
Now, is this the last time they're going to do this? When they come out of business or...
With this company? I think that's what he's asking.
She told me that she wouldn't do it this year, but she decided to stay in business. So as long as she's in business, I want to do business with her. Other than that, business as usual.
Tim, is there a loop or something broke at the Westinghouse intersection with 35? Some of the employees are saying they used to hold both sides, now it's just holding one side. They can't get out going?
The state changed the program on the times, and they have what's called a lag delay term, and it changes the whole program.
So that's, it's intentional, so it'll be that way at one? Okay. I really like that message to them.
They say it's traffic flows better by the...
That was part of the... When we asked them to come up and look at 35 and Airport Road, the city submitted a project to redo all of that intersection, but in the meantime, they worked on their timing with their lights and everything. How much, it seemed to help a little bit, but I'm still not working on it.
I think the Simmons employees think that they should just stop all the traffic when they get off?
Yeah.
Just let them all out there and so fix it like that, so...
I got that from the engineer.
No, I wait till they are all gone.
I met with the engineer when he was here before, and he said the first thing they need to do is for the traffic light to clear. So most likely, if this gets approved, then it's the first thing they do.
So the thing at the intersection of Walmart and 35 and 6, that loop, will it...
No, it's still not yet. We haven't had time to put it in, but the traffic flow now, you can't tell that it's broken.
Okay.
Traffic's a lot lighter right now than it was for Christmas.
All righty. Thank you, sir. I know Greg's at the ARPA convention this week, that's why he's not here. Talked with Chris Saint yesterday, just kind of giving that date on what our summer and what our scheduling looks like for the complex. I believe he told me they had 22 Saturday tournaments scheduled already, and he told me how many Friday tournaments also, so they're really filling up the dates that are complex. So we should see a lot of folks coming in for a thing this summer.
Eddie, you have any thoughts?
Business as usual.
Okay. Jessica?
I have a couple of things. I wanted to let everybody know that the state has the simple buy sellers use tax program up and going, and they're going to have a link on their website soon that we can find out who all has signed up. You don't know which one that is, but the online retailers can sign up. We've gotten a small amount of tax from that already, so hopefully by the end of the week, I can kind of look and see who all signed up. And I passed out, we've been working on some policies and procedures on the advice of NDA and the public examiners. If you guys can look through that and tell me what we need to do to update it, or if you like it, or you want to change it, Rocky, look through and see if we've got everything that needs to be.
I will do so.
Cash receipts, payroll purchasing, cash dispersals, and vehicle usage. If you want to get back with me sometime soon.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Own the business. You know, thanks to Marine Corps Reserve to present an award of recognition to the mayor and the council for their appreciation of the city's support of the Toys for Tots program. That's what I was wondering.
Well, actually, here they are. I didn't know whether they were coming or not, but basically it was for the Toys for Tots program, there's articles in the paper today about that, and they said, yes, Marine Corps Reserve proudly recognized Fort Plaine City Council for outstanding support of the 2015 Marine Toys for Tots program, et cetera. So, and I'm just saying that. I think they do a good job. I really, we're lucky to have them like that. They really, they put a lot of work in, a lot of work.
Okay. New business.
Discussion on sale of seed property at Vertigal. That's the Barry Dunn office supply building. Barry Dunn currently leased this building from the city.
Rocky, can I talk about this? Do you want to discuss it?
Well, we de facto extended that. We need to formalize their lease technically ended in November 1st, 2014. They've continued with the lease, we've continued to accept the payment. So one thing we need to do tonight is to formalize the extension of that lease for an additional five years. My understanding is that they're prepared to give us notice that they're going to exercise the option that's contained in that lease to purchase the property.
Barry does five-year period?
I think immediately. Immediately. So even though we're going to basically ratify what we've already been doing, then they're going to turn around and buy the property for the price that was agreed on originally. And then the agreement was that whatever they paid toward, we'll credit toward that price.
I like the motion that we extend that for five years.
Motion from Ramon?
Second.
Second from Walter, that we extend that lease another five years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And for clarity, that'll be five years from November 1st, 2014.
That property boundary still cuts off right that little berm, right that little plant berm on the side between what, police cars apart? So the only park that they've got is just right in front of the building, right?
That is correct.
That's right. I'm sure they want to keep that parking space out there for a week.
Rocky, did you also say we need a letter from them?
Well, we need something from them that says we're exercising our option to purchase. And once we do that, then we can tell them what they need to do to finalize that.
I told them I'd call back after leading tonight.
Just tell them since the letter, I don't think that counts unless they take any more action because the, once you ratify that lease, the purchase process and the price is all already in there. So all they've got to do is give us notice and get their title work done, and we'll convey that property.
All right. Thank you, Rocky.
Next, the Kangaroo Express has been purchased by Circle K and asked that their alcohol license for beer and wine be transferred to that name.
Nothing changes other than, as I said, Kangaroo, the pantry actually is the name of the corporation, has been purchased by Circle K. And the wish to renew their license, of course, it'll be in a different name, but nothing, absolutely nothing changes other than the name and the ownership of the corporation.
Are they required to go through the application process?
I've got an application, but it's not, in essence, as I said, it's strictly a name change.
I understand, but it's required to go through alcohol or name change?
I think the only time it's required to do that is if there's an actual ownership change in the form of, you've got different people and therefore different backgrounds, that'll be running. I don't think it would in this case.
I mean, even if you did, it's a de facto, it's just nothing changes. The location's the same. Only thing is changing in essence is the name.
Name on the front.
Changing the name to get a remittance, so...
Do you have a motion here?
Yes. That's why I just wanted FYI, just like to have a motion.
So we approve the name change?
Yeah.
Motion from Walter, second from Red, that we approve this name change on the transferred license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next, NDA to address the mayor and council on the results of the city's... Hang on. Come on.
All the big boxes stuff you got there. They take a while to load.
Well, do you and Andy still have your copies?
I have mine. Do you have yours?
Tell them she had three minutes.
Three minutes?
I thought you said I had two minutes.
You're using up your time.
She doesn't bite, but she's pretty good.
Mind not have those changes in it, that's what it's like when they are.
Thank you.
I have a whole table upstairs. I need to go pay that page here. Never pay.
I'll tell you what, we're going to let you have a subsequent after adjournment session in the morning, so tell you all.
I'm Kate Condit Brown. I'm from NDA professional group. I worked with Jason Hicken, I guess most of y'all know him, for about seven years before. He went to DC US, so I guess y'all have to know me now. We appreciate working with y'all, and we really enjoyed working with Andy and Jessica this year, so I think everything went very smoothly. Page one, it doesn't have a page number, but it's a copy that says independent auditor report. This report is our opinion on the financial statements. And on page two, there's a paragraph called the opinion paragraph, and that is our opinion that the financial statements are materially incorrect, which means we're giving an unmodified opinion, which is a point opinion, and that's the opinion that you want to give it to.
And that's a preview of what we made before, right? Because we made that sort of hard time on.
Yeah, we have worked the past couple of years to clean up some of the stuff that was given, a qualified opinion, I think last year was the first year, it was unmodified opinion, so still an unmodified opinion.
That means we get a refund?
No.
I'm looking at something very quickly, but let me ask you. It says under audit is responsibility, and it says we audit the financial statements of Fort Plaine City Board of Education.
Is that, is that Board of Education, or is that a misprint?
That is, that is saying that we also have audited the board of education, and that's one of the new requirements, that you have to include their numbers into your numbers.
I got you.
So it's a separate audit, so that's why we're saying there's kind of two different opinions. One is their opinion that we're including. All right. First page I want you to look at is on page four, and that's page four, not four, in the one in four. Governmental financial statements present their financial statements in... Oh yeah, you've got to go past the one in there. Governmental financial statements are required to present their financial statements in two different versions. And the first version that we're going to look at is on pages four and five, and that's looking at it as if the city were a business and not a government organization. So you could compare this apples to apples to any other type of business financial statement. And if you see on page four, there's a line that says total assets, and that is everything owned by the city, no matter if it's infrastructure or cash and bank or accounts receivable. And total assets at September 30th were six million, which was an increase of about 19 million compared to the year before. And the biggest change of that is the addition of the IP 9 and 49 Street. The city took that over from the state, so... And then you see middle ways down, total liabilities. Your total liabilities for the city was 21 million, which was an increase of about nine million compared to the year before, but that's not, not because of debt that the city has incurred, but that is because of all cities and towns and quasi-public organizations have had to add what's called a net pension liability to their books this year. And that's the difference between what has been contributed to RSA from city employees and the city, and the difference of what actuaries in Montgomery have calculated that the city might owe at some point in the future. So that difference is having to be added to everybody this year.
That was one of the things, I think, I sent you guys from the league train that I went to, that was one of the things that they kind of prepared for, was to see that big knock in our liability.
That's a good number of track, though.
That's true. It's a shock to everybody this year, but we didn't believe that the bond folks, you know, they are aware of this, and they're going to take that into consideration.
So it's no real change, it's just a change in how this report is.
Yeah, when they first started talking about this, Rocky and Chris, guys, we did get on the phone with Raymond James and asked him would that adversely impact their bond rating, and they didn't think it would at all.
But this is one of the deals where it stayed wet.
Yes.
I mean, and all apartments, water, parking, it's like...
Right. Everybody.
Anybody, basically anybody, it's based on RSA.
On RSA, that's right.
All right. And the difference, that next paragraph, which is your net position, that net position means all of your assets less all of your liabilities, and the difference is 44 million, which is an increase compared to last year. And the main reason of that is adding the IP 9, taking out the RSA debt. On page five, this schedule is basically works like an income statement, and there's a line down at the bottom where it says change in net position. There's three lines from the bottom. That basically means net income. So for the year of September 30th, 2015, the city's net income was 20 million, 20.1 million, and 19 of it was contributed to the IP 9, 49th Street. So even if you took that out of consideration, the city was still showing a pretty good profit.
Amazing.
And also, that number last year was a loss of 98,000.
Yeah. Pretty good profit.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right.
Angie?
What do you do?
What were you talking for, bro?
What were you talking for?
And no, Andy, you can't take a percentage.
Don't even talk about that.
Yeah, let's don't say them words. All right. On pages six and eight, this is the second version of financial statements, where earlier I was saying the first version is looking at it as if this were a business. The second version is looking at it as if it were a city where you have your general funds and your debt service fund, and then all your non-major funds, which is your gas tax street. So page six says, looking at your balance sheet, your assets, and these are only current assets, and your debt, and that's only current debt. So looking at it from this standpoint, your total assets across the city was 13 million, which was an increase of about 361,000 from your report. Your current liabilities stayed by the same. And then fund balance is the difference between your assets, current assets, which is your current liability. Page eight is the most closest type of income statement that y'all are calling familiar with, getting along with, from the city and the government standpoint, and this is how you can batch the budget, too. So Paul Ramey, that first section across the city was 37 million, but of course, 19 million of that was from the IP 9. And that was an increase, we didn't take the IP 9 into consideration, that was an increase of about 17, 18 million compared to... Well, increase of about 20 million compared to the year before, but you have to back out the 19 million that, that IP 9, so still showing an increase compared to... Next section shows your expenditure by department. And then there's a line that says net changes in fund balance, it's towards the bottom. That basically means your net income. So you can see that line all the way across, so your net income or your net loss from your different funds. Last year, we're showing a loss of, I think, 188,000 in your total column, so this year was a loss of 92.
92.
Yeah. It's pretty, that's a good bet, too, so, and that's pretty much where you're getting pretty close to... All right.
Now, is that taken into account, the bond services interest, is there any depreciation?
Not in this statement. This shows whenever you buy something new that you ordinarily would have capitalized and appreciated on these statements, it shows the entire expense in the year that you bought it, $50,000.
That would be the capital outlay?
Yep. So that's the main difference between those two different versions of the statement. Pages 10 through 12 show the breakdown of your proprietary funds, which is the third sanitation airport at Dolph.
Any tree and a little stump done at you?
On page 10, your, the assets, they, they all increased except for overall, they decreased because of your depreciation. So if you had not taken depreciation into consideration, your assets would have increased. And my buildings decreased by about 500,000, and that's paid off your bond. I don't show you all the schedule here, man, but it's going to get more detail of your debt.
Oh, the airport project that we had last year, the resurfacing runway, did that get into this audit, or is that a little base to know?
I think that's, I think that's, this was...
A couple of these things.
Yeah, a couple of them.
We like...
This place, the...
They were already...
Yeah, we finished doing that.
Nine hundred thousand dollars. Back with you, too. You have a back with you today?
Yeah. Page, page 12 shows your income statement for the proprietary funds. There's a line there in the middle, listed operating income loss. So you can see how the each fund is staying across the board.
We had to film them last year, like, was it 500 times or anything?
Um, last year, the total loss was showing 336,000, so this year's loss is 96,000. And almost all of that is just depreciation, but you add that back, and then you had an almost 1.2 million depreciation expense, and that's not cash, so...
So we had nothing from depreciation, it was...
Well, another thing, we all, we had about four year of rate increases.
It said 1.2 in depreciation?
Yes. There's a line, this proprietary level, operating income loss.
Basically, if you back out depreciation, you're looking at a much lower loss from the airport.
If you back out depreciation, you're not looking at a loss at all. You're looking at about 1.1 million positive. But of course, ultimately, you have to spend that depreciation because at some point, you've got to replace all that junk, stuff, equipment. What's the right word? Get the right words before we leave you now.
Don't put it in there.
Stuff, yeah, that's...
Equipment, that's...
I don't know who came up with that, but that's, that's an accounting process that every person don't take that into account.
I'll take offense to that.
Do what?
I'll take offense to that.
It's a fence, man.
That's what, that's what those vain counters come up with.
Somebody did, they really did. And somebody else developed all this government reporting, too.
Oh, yeah. And by that, somebody comes up with something new, you're...
Yes. Yeah, it could.
Say it's a good little thing. All right. On the next schedule I want you to look at is on page 44, and this shows the amount of debt that the city had at the beginning of the year. And so... And so a column for additions, the only main addition was a capital release that was signed for the dominant equipment. And then there is a column for a rededicance. And I also want to point out that first, the top half of that schedule is for the city, and the bottom half is for the proprietary funds, which is all of the sewer, sewer sanitation, all, all those combined together. So you can see, the city started out with that eleven million, added about two hundred and thirty, and then paid off four over a million debt. So ended up with ten million dollars. Ten point four, and then, and then proprietary funds started out with.
Two hundred and thirty, oh, I see.
That's what I'm. And then the, uh, proprietary funds started out with six million in debt, paid off eight hundred and forty six thousand during the year, and then ended with five point two million. And then back on page forty one is a schedule of what is coming up to, and then it's five years, and then five years after that.
Can you look back at, back at, on, uh, at those long-term liabilities, again, the additions, is that interesting? What is that?
They all run fair.
Yeah, initiation of.
Okay, okay, I see. Okay, I got you, okay, very good.
So page forty one shows what's coming to you, an increase and reversal over the next couple of years. And after two thousand seventeen, it starts to decline.
Yeah, two seventeen, two thousand seventeen, one of the sewer fund paid off, isn't that correct?
Yes, yeah. My three minutes, though.
I guess, unless you've got something else to say.
Well, that's all of them going, or who says something else?
Other post-employment benefits, can we talk about total for fourteen?
Yeah, um. Last year. Last year, the city hired an actuary to determine how much the city is gonna owe at some point in the, in the future on health insurance benefits.
Retirees.
Paid to retirees, because after employees retire, if they meet certain requirements, that you can use on the city's health insurance for a period of time. So there's this big unknown number about what the city might owe at some point in the future. And last year, they hired an actuary to start putting that number on books, and it's gonna continue to increase. And, um, as you can see, the, on page fifty seven, the line that says net O P obligation, that is the liability that gets put on to the books.
I was making a recommendation to, um, start voting for this, because this is a city's liability. It's not the, like, the net pension liability that the state put on the books. This is our liability, because of our policy. So I feel like we need to start funding this and not let it go too far out of control.
This is twenty five year employee.
Or, or other employees in certain situations.
Twenty, twenty five year or disabled, right?
Disabled in ten year.
Whatever law ties them for that necessity.
All right, any questions?
I'd just like to say that I'm extremely proud of, of the way everybody's come to this. Of Jessica, of Ramrod's lives, she does an extremely good job. Everybody over here is conscious of money being spent, and, and it shows, it shows. So I, I appreciate it very much, you know? I don't take credit for it, these guys, they hurt them, maybe Andy a little bit.
It's just a pleasure working with her and her crew.
Well, I, I think it extends also to our department heads and the folks today, because they are very, very conscious about the money they're spending, and they work hard with their budgets to, to put together a very efficient budget, and so it, 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 it's from top to bottom.
Everybody, yeah. And, and I think we've got as good a work in the crew as I've seen, from all the way bottom to top.
I've watched, I've been here long enough to watch the department heads going from not knowing what we were doing, to actually kind of understanding budget time, like getting, sitting down, crunching those bullets, and helps them help us, so we don't have to do so much particularity there. I think it's, as, as we, if we're not afraid to share information with them, then they're not afraid to help us cut the, since all of this sharing information, being a good team, so, and we got it going on here in Fort Payne, so it's a blessing, actually what it is, so I'm, I'm thankful for that too, just, you know, everybody said.
I also think that, uh, us getting on the budgets early, to get it passed by the start of the fiscal year, or trying through the last few years, I think it really contributed to, to everyone being more aware and trying to stay with it.
When did we pass our budget the first?
Weekend.
Well, we didn't have a budget, uh, because they didn't pass the budget, they didn't want to pass a budget for us to have to live with, so I think we passed it sometime around the first of the year, maybe, or December, or something like that. But since then, it's been, by the beginning of fiscal year each, each year.
Which is what they offered.
Right.
Thank you very much, thank you, Kate.
If you have any questions, just, when you get the reading, it's in front of you, just call us, and, um, I'll also be emailing her a PDF, a circular PDF copy, that you can forward to her to anybody that needs it.
So any additional questions, we have, we have no charge, right?
We'll see. Depends on what time, time of day it might be.
By twelve P M and twelve A M, whether we'll be in charge.
No, no, she's just a question.
Since it's kind of a, or it is a political, I just wanted to get y'all's questions.
If there's not any schedule conflict, I don't have a problem on you, to, to see you play the motion, I'll play the motion.
Let me add to that motion, one of this available for all parties, yes, for all parties, yeah.
Second. A little hammer, I mean, that's, I think there's no rule against it, obviously. If you make a vote with a political party, it has to be all political parties. Even if it will, ice this one, have a meeting, you have to. If it's split the party, once you open it, it's open.
Right.
In the past, y'all have been very conservative about allowing political rallies, I think we have a couple at the, at the pavilion.
At the pavilion last year.
We have, we have time to take your part.
Have had some in the city park, had some, had several tea party meetings in the city park. Like I said, there's absolutely nothing illegal about it, but y'all have been very careful in doing that, because once, um, I mean, doing it for the Republicans and Democrats is probably not a big issue, but there are supporters out there that it could be an issue, you're not gonna be able to say that, so.
I could, you sure we're not gonna be, you said that? Well, you know.
I mean, if they're recognized, we look at the parties, libertarians, the socialist, I don't remember who else.
Communist to do that.
The communist, the Nazis.
I'm definitely not in favor of supporting, I'm, I'm just saying that a normal Democrat or Republican.
You can't sound like a normal Democrat, you can't limit it like that. If you open it up to political parties.
You open it, it's open.
You hope, you, it's either open or closed.
Well, that being the case, I think we need to, we need to make a blanket statement that said because of that, we can't, we can't allow it.
That's a policy decision for y'all, but you just need to understand that once you open the door, the door's open.
The reason I ask, because this, this has been our policy, I'm not sure that we've ever turned down anything specific about the Cullen Iron Building, but we have turned down political rallies at our, I, I, we had, there was something here a while back we turned down for some.
Yeah, I know that several times the, um, and, and, and some would argue that Klan is a political organization, we've turned them down, obviously, they go to courthouse steps, and, and you're right, there was something else that, that was turned down.
I remember what it was or where it was.
Yeah, there were, there were a couple of activities, if I recall correctly, at the pavilion, but I don't know that we've ever allowed one at the, well, I mean, other than, for the city election at the, at the auditorium, or the, or the, or any building, do you recall any? But as I said, I'm not telling you you can't do it, I don't wanna be, but I'm just simply saying that once you open that door, uh, then that door's open for all legitimate. Well, I, I don't even wanna use that term, because we don't need to be in the business of judging what is and isn't legitimate.
That's what I was about to say.
Party, uh, so basically.
Were we not open the door last year, by having both parties?
At the pavilion, yeah, that doesn't open it for the.
So does that.
Art and Gold Building.
No, but, if it, it's done been done last year, so. I understand there's a little bit more of it open.
And we've allowed a park to be used for a tea party, so.
Let me, let me just, let me just understand this in my head, I, I won't, I won't allow the Tea Party to come, then if, if the Klan is proven to be an organization that is, is a political party, I couldn't say, you can't do it?
That's rough.
Okay, well, I, well, I, we can't, we can't be unfair, if we're not gonna allow everybody to do it, and there will be some cases, it, it's, you know, when I look at the, the history of the party, if they're not gonna be friendly to Fort Payne, if they double all in the same category, then I'm not willing to allow, take a chance on citizens for a pain, if somebody can get another shootout like they did with the, when the Klan was down there, a couple of members were shot, and then ended up a guy getting decapitated, you remember that? The park, so if, if this is lumped all in together, then, then, um, when the Mr. Spocky drive it home, and then they had the rallies over here, so if it's all lumped in together, we got to real, be careful of our, protect our citizens. So if it's lumped in together, I, I think we should, we should explain it, why we're doing it, and we should, this is, this is protecting our own citizens here, we can't allow it in our parks. If I need to do that in motion, I'll put it in form of a motion.
Well, I'll, we're discussing that, does the political realm extend into the religious realm?
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, you know, here, I mean, if, if, if we just pick the church down the road, if, if, uh, we allow the Methodist and Baptist to, uh, use, uh, our park for some function of theirs, and, uh, and we have. And then, uh, an Islamic group, uh, which I don't reckon we have around here, but if we did, and one of them came and wanted to use that, uh, or Jewish or Catholic or whatever, wanted to use it, then no, you couldn't turn that down either.
We didn't have, we didn't have the Tea Party last year in the park.
We've allowed Tea Party in the park, and we've allowed, I think, both the Republicans and Democrats. So I, I think if this request was to use the pavilion again, or use the party, either we would have to start a new, have, have to pass a, a new policy right now, that says from this point forward, we're not gonna allow any or whatever. Or we're gonna have to say, uh, we, we've opened it up for, for political activities in the park and in the pavilion, and we're gonna continue to allow that, but, uh, not at the Cullen Iron Building.
So the way it is right now, uh, we're, they're having that pavilion without a problem, is that correct?
Well, we've already opened that up, and we're gonna have, yeah, well, it, it, we're gonna have to take some definitive action to say from this point forward, we're not gonna allow any.
We'll wait till some particular definitive action comes, and then make that call.
But that, that would also include the Tea Party rally in the park.
At that point, at that, this point, no, we could let this go, then, the, when something does come to us that is questionable, at that point, we cut it off to everybody.
No, you can't wait till you get the injunction. You can't, you can't come up and say, well, we decided to do them first, folks, so we're not gonna let anybody, um, in either, you gotta not let anybody, you gotta let every legitimate, um, uh, and I've probably used a, a bad scenario or a bad example with the Klan, because I think we could make a, make a good argument there, that there are some dangers that are not intended to other parties. And therefore, we, we can make some legitimate, um, uh, differential layer, that was probably a poor choice of, of, of an example on my part, but, uh, generally speaking, once you go to let political parties use government property, then you gotta let them off, you can't pick and choose. And we can't wait till we, I mean, we're okay with Republicans, and we're okay with Democrats, and we're okay with the Tea Party, oh, but I don't, no, some other, the socialists come up here, well, we don't like socialists, so we're not gonna let them do it.
Well, that wouldn't have a problem.
It, it does.
But you could, you could add, you could add it while we're in for hate groups, maybe? Could you, could you exclude them, I mean, things, you know, something, I'll upset about something that may be bad, I don't think.
Well, I think you can exclude it, if you, if you've got reasonable grounds, and can demonstrate facts on which you can, um, show that there is a particular danger, but, you know, the county couldn't keep the Klan from, uh.
Making on the courthouse.
Making on the courthouse steps. It's public property, they couldn't keep them from doing that, so if you're not gonna let, and, and, and we might not ever have a problem, you know, we may be, uh, um, well, my daddy used to call it borrowing a jack, but that's a long story, but we may be anticipating a problem that never will come up, but if it comes up, and you've got somebody here that don't want in there, you're gonna have an awfully difficult time, if they're willing to pursue it through the court system, you're gonna have an awful difficult time saying no.
For what sake, you guys? Motion?
I think, I think the wise thing for us to do is to, is to just let them find private properties to do this on, I just, I don't know that we wanna.
I suggested it would go a little further and maybe table this, and then, um.
The string of the ages.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, yes, that you're gonna turn this one down, but it might be good if we tried to, if we call the league, and call some other towns, and try to develop an overall policy of what we're gonna do with regard to political parties and political requests, and.
Have we not had a political bend in the Cullen Iron Building before?
I don't know.
How did I know what?
We have rented, or I don't know, but we have somebody.
They have in Hunt Hall.
In Hunt Hall, they've rented it. But I assume they're talking about this. That's landmarks, that's great. Yeah, several politicians have rented Hunt Hall for receptions.
I, I would just say that until we can come up with a little, a better idea, that formulate a, a policy or a plan, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't, uh, grant any of these at all, until we come up with a plan. And, and that may mean we can't grant any until next year, uh.
We'll, we'll immediately start taking, taking a look at it, because this is an election year, and, and, although we may miss primaries, there will be the, the general election, and we'll try to take a look at that and see what restrictions there are.
I would draw my motion.
Randall, is that a motion to not, or, I guess we just don't like a motion, just don't.
I don't think you have to.
No, I think we're doing, the other just, just, you know, decide that we're gonna, we're gonna get a level of the policy, and we're gonna talk about it some more.
This was not a plea from anybody.
Somebody wants to rent a place for us?
Well, we'll take a look at that as part of the policy.
House Club.
Because, well, I mean, you know, you get back into, you get back into the thing of, we couldn't, for example, say, well, let's just make it obvious, we couldn't say, well, we'll, we'll rent the country club to the Republicans, but we're not gonna rent it. We couldn't, for example, say, well, let's just make it obvious, we couldn't say, well, we'll, we'll rent the country club to the Republicans, but we're not gonna rent it to the Democrats.
You can have the same situation.
That's right. So, we're, yeah, so you, you've got, you've got a problem that you can, once again, you can demonstrate some danger to the building or, or security or whatever, then... Because there are groups now that we can refuse to rent to because we know that, uh, there're gonna be trouble when, when we rent them over there. But we'll try to get you, we'll try to get some sort of overall policy, uh, in place. Or to you and let y'all take a look at it and see exactly what we can do.
Now, we have, uh, rented a theater on the humorous attention for religious groups. They paid, what groups? Everybody else.
Religious.
I don't know but one political, um, action that took place during the campaign that put Ron Hart to, to have a rally there in the field.
Well, we, we'll, we'll try to get the parameters of it and make sure I'm not making a mountain out of a molehill, but, um, I'm pretty sure I'm not, but...
All right, so again, on this one.
Just no action, therefore, it's not approved.
Okay. Last thing on your business is an activity permit for the Little River Rocks Council Music Concert at the Roadman Pavilion. It's the Saturday, June the twenty-fifth, uh, the same date as by night, they will need to get Mike Griggs to determine the time of the concert. Mike's over here.
If you, if you talked with him.
We talked about it and I don't think he's been able to get in touch with anybody on that contact list, uh, so we're gonna still try to see what time they're gonna do the thing.
They listen to, that makes sense, Junior. We can take a listen to if you have a little better idea.
The lady, the lady came up here when, when she filled us out and, and I, I got Mike and Chad and what, what they, kind of agreed with just to blend the two events together. But we, but I, I didn't know that Mike was gonna do it. I forgot that. Yeah, we just put this in back.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. The Kmart building, uh, Dollar Tree is in operation. Back up will be opened shortly. We don't really know the date of guns. Uh, but we need to start tracking the sales for, you know, rethink on that. And the Dollar Tree in particular, I guess we, they're in operation late. I guess we'll just have to compare their sales against, I'm feeling like year.
Yeah, I've already created a spreadsheet that shows the last three years of sales for the Dollar Tree. So, all I'm ready to do is plug in the next month as soon as we get them on the map.
Uh, a lot of folks in that parking lot.
Oh, Alawf was there.
Alawf was there.
I went down there this afternoon and walked through it.
He melted this afternoon, wasn't he? He was down there, he was melted this afternoon. It was warm out there.
Um, just, hello. Tony Keith brought up, uh, Estable doing a fence, replacing the fence down in the parking lot. Uh, a nine-one-one fence between air pocket, which is air fence, and the back offices and all that other, and, um, he tore a lot of it down because of the dangers. What did he have price on the material for that?
Yeah, he brought me a, a budget adjustment form. I wanted to bring it here. He said he had given you the details since it was not a budgeted item. I wanted everybody to know about it and prove it. Um, if, if you're gonna improve it or if you wanna wait till the next budget year. Two thousand and fifty dollars is what he gave us the estimates for that.
That's a wood fence. You got a tank still down there. It, it does not look good, but, uh...
Mr. Mayor, they tore, the, the majority of it that was falling down, they tore it down today because it was gonna be as on somebody's car. But if it had a strong wind, now it probably would have crossed the park.
It'd get some other.
It, 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 it looks bad. It's been there a long time. Do we make the new fence? Because, you know, there's that big, there's an area between it and the parking lot that you can't get to the fence anyway. It's not like somebody's gonna fall off. Is it just for aesthetics or?
That I can't answer that, you know. Ever since I've been around, that fence has been there, so I don't know why it was put up in the first place.
We have had, we have had a problem with kids and people that's going across the parking lot besides the police van where it's open, jumping in and going like up to the courthouse. Had several people coming through there, jumping that area, they're gonna be hurt.
Jumping it with, uh, gate board or what you, what you?
Oh, just jumping up on it and going across. No, they jump up on the, the brick.
Brick wall.
Where the wood was and then jump across that ditch.
Take the charcoal?
Yes.
It's a brick wall with brick column spaced at ten or twelve foot apart with a slatty fence, wood fence and, and, most of us, he pulled down probably, what, two-thirds of it? About a dozen and, uh, it's something we need to fix. That price, I think, was just strictly wood that he needed for that, basically.
He told me the material, so he knows best by.
Still a lot of labor involved. I mean, it takes a while to do it. And I don't know whether there's any, anything else that we'd use that would be costly to pay.
Well, I mentioned last and he looked at it like I was crazy, so. And he said, put it back up with just a wood privacy fence. It's gonna be the cheapest, most economical way to go. How's our, are we budgeted? Are we doing well enough to be able to fund this?
We still have funds available on the, the budget adjustment fund. I haven't, I didn't have a chance to get with Randy or Eddie to find out if there was anything in their budget that came in under budget that we might could pull funds from. But we do, we do have enough funds in the budget adjustment to do this.
We have tapped into that fund quite a bit, though.
Yeah, that's what I mean. At this, at this time of week, are we in our fourth month? Fourth, fifth month? So, my, I guess my question, if we had to look at it, are we, were we, according to the, the fifth month, are we, we still have some left over or where are?
Yeah, we do. I don't have it with me exactly how much it is, but, um, I can, I can look, um...
Something about sixty thousand, what?
Yeah, I think that's somewhere around sixty seven thousand.
We used about forty percent.
There's several things on where to put some aside.
About forty percent of the year.
We need to consider those, though, what we're talking about and all.
Yeah.
One of them was the airport.
It's two thousand dollars?
Two thousand and fifty dollars.
I think that, uh, just looking at what I, that looks like a balance that we got in there, what, thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. That's...
That's the number that I have.
In the budget.
That's left in the budget.
Left in the adjustment.
Because we approved, um, we approved some that we haven't actually seen, uh, police vehicles.
What will happen if we don't replace it right now?
It'd just be some columns up there without any fence out there.
No public safety?
We'll try to put it down, but I can't promise that.
I mean, there's, there's no walkway that people, they're, they're gonna be doing what Eddie's doing, just jumping on it.
Yeah, there is a little stair, bridge, stair thing down at the end of the parking lot closer to the woods and the woods, I think, Bill, where people can actually go up, uh, but it's on the down.
We can go there. I think we should lay it in this.
Let's take, let's take a look at it. I, I might just take a look myself.
I would have done a little bit this way.
I realize we're only talking about two thousand dollars, but we're also talking about that budget money and I just...
You got, you only got thirty-six thousand left and, uh, something, something might happen.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we sent in our cap application, uh, last week for the walkway on the Safeway. And highly unusual, they looked at it the day we seen it. And in fact, they, as soon as they got it, they looked at it. They've been on the phone with, uh, uh, Wayne Metis a couple of times. And he thinks it's looking pretty darn good, so we'll see what happens. Normally, you don't hear anything from them for weeks. And evidently, they've got some money they wanna give to somebody, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully, we're gonna get that. I would like you all to think a little bit about, uh, deposits on sewer and garbage. We, any time that we have, uh, uncollected bills with a, with a guy's, with a quarter company, they apply their deposit to their bill. And there's none left over. If we've got, uh, if, if, if it's a garbage bill, uh, tied along with it, have a sewer bill, nine times out of ten, all the deposit money's gone before it gets to us. And a lot of times, these people are just moved off or for one reason or the other. We're getting reports from them, uh, mail on a fairly regular basis, so we track this a bit better. But it was brought up and I think I talked with Paula Bell about it. They, he said it'd been, uh, discussed one time before about adding some small deposits for garbage and sewer. So, don't think about that. It doesn't, we gotta act on right now, but, uh... Carol Mennefield has asked if we could practice the follies next Tuesday or Wednesday. And I figured Tuesday'd be a better day. You might can't make it. It'd be probably five, five-thirty or something like that.
Next Tuesday.
Uh, next Tuesday. Uh?
What time?
Um, I'd say five-thirty.
I could probably make it by five. We've got a B Z A meeting at five, but I should be able to.
Well, we can put it off a little later than that, as far as they go.
I, I could probably do it by five-thirty.
Walter said he wasn't gonna be in it, but then I think he's going to, right?
Yeah, I'll leave.
He'll be acting like the rest of us.
They wanna be play President Obama. I tell you, that's a little bit dangerous there.
And as far as personnel changes, you got those in the back. We, we actually did a trash burn from the police department, sanitation department with one. And, uh, we've had some resignation, we had one resignation, that's from base near raises. And, uh, anyway, Dorian Titty got his BS degree in criminal justice from Athens, so, uh, he fell in there, too. I'm glad to see anybody that takes the initiative to spend the extra time and that's required, you know, especially when it has to do with your job. I mean, you know, I can see somebody going into accounting that's working, running backhoe, but, you know, they don't job together, so, but this does. And I think that's about all that, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that's it. Uh, yeah, do we need to go to executive session?
Yes, we did.
Discuss contract? Got a motion for Randall, vote. Okay, second from Walter, they'll call a vote.
Aye. Aye.
We're executives this session. Andrew, thank you for coming. You got anything you'd like to stand up and say or anything? Thanks for coming.